The June 13 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Here.
Mr. Valles.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: January 25, 2024, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. And we have a legal update this evening. Aaron?
Yes. Because the Board is going to be discussing a matter, specifically the WTEA contract, on which a majority of the Board members have a conflict, the Board is going to consider invoking the doctrine of necessity. I'm going to read the resolution that would invoke the doctrine pursuant to Board policy. That the Board of Education adopt the following resolution: Whereas the School Ethics Act, NJSA 18A, Con 12-21, EdSec, was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct; and whereas the School Ethics Commission has provided guidance regarding the invocation of the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education is not available because members of the Board of Education have conflicts of interest on a matter required to be addressed and voted upon. Whereas the Woodbridge Township Board of Education is having a discussion relating to and ratification vote on the collective bargaining agreement with the Woodbridge Township Education Association, the WTEA; whereas members of the Board have conflicts of interest that would prevent their participation and discussion related to and vote on the WTEA agreement as follows: Marie Anderson was endorsed as a candidate for the Board during the 2023 Annual School Board Election by the WTEA. Frank De La Pietro's wife is a secretary who is a member of the WTEA. Additionally, Mr. De La Pietro was endorsed as a candidate for the Board during the 2023 Annual School Board Election by the WTEA. Daniel Harris's sister-in-law is a teacher who is a member of the WTEA. Nazar Mohammed was endorsed as a candidate for the Board during the 2023 Annual School Board Election by the WTEA. Jonathan Treeblosser's wife, nieces, and nephew are teachers who are members of the WTEA. Whereas, as a result of the foregoing, the Board does not have a quorum to discuss or vote on the ratification of the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the WTEA, and the Board has determined that it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Woodbridge Township Board of Education that the doctrine of necessity is hereby invoked with respect to the Board's discussion in executive session this evening regarding the WTEA agreement and the public vote related thereto. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, having been read at a public meeting of the Board on June 13, 2024, shall be posted in accordance with the Board's standard procedures for not less than 30 days, and that the Board Secretary reflect the same in the minutes of the meeting. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be provided to the School Ethics Commission.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. I make a motion to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion by myself, seconded by Mr. Treeblosser. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain, please read the closed session statement, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bourdain. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Board retires to closed session. We'll be out as soon as possible. Thank you. All right, we're returning now. Before we salute to the flag and give a moment of silence, I'd ask that we, when given the moment of silence, that you keep in your thoughts and prayers. This evening, two police officers were shot here in Woodbridge Township last night. I understand they're recovering, but please keep our police in our thoughts and prayers. They protect our schools and our town on a daily basis. So please join me in saluting the flag in a moment of silence. Do I have a motion or reconvene?
So motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Treeblosser, seconded by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Here.
Mr. Valles.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings?
No motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Frank, did you get a first and a second? Any additions or corrections? I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Mr. Treeblosser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary. Please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you. Mr. President, the following bids and proposals were opened for the 2024-25 school year. On May 29, 2024, we opened IFB 2504 for carpentry supplies and IFB 2505 for food service kitchen repair. On May 30, 2024, we opened IFB 2506 for HVAC supplies and 2507 for plumbing supplies. On May 31, 2024, we opened IFB 2508 for electrical supplies and IFB 2509 boiler supplies. June 5, we had an RFP for substitute staffing services, 25-02, and June 7, we had RFQ 25-01 for copiers. June 11, we had IFB 2510 for train proprietary software, IFB 2511 for solar energy monitoring, and IFB 2512 for solar panel removal.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Shreya Singh, from John F. Kennedy Memorial High School.
Shreya currently ranks fourth in the class of 341 students and has attained a 4.2 GPA. He is enrolled in the most challenging schedule JFK has to offer, which includes many accelerated honors and advanced placement courses. Clearly, his hard work has paid off, as he has been named an AP Scholar with Distinction and a National Merit Scholar semifinalist, along with participating in the Columbia Science Honor Program. Shreya excels in mathematics, as noted in his participation in the AMC 12 National Math Competition, ranking fourth nationally in the American Regions Math League, holding the District Central Jersey Math League record, and in his junior year, scoring a perfect 800 on the math section of the SAT, outshining his 780 on the verbal. Yes, for those doing mental math, Shreya has received a 1580 on his SAT. Outside the classroom, Shreya has not only been involved in clubs, but has been a leader in his activities, holding the title of captain and director of the math team, captain for both the academic STEM team, treasurer of the French Honor Society, officer of the Science Honor Society, officer of the Computer Science Club, and being named a Life Scout Patrol Leader for the Scouts. Shreya is not just an academic, but an athlete who has been part of the cross-country team and swim teams as a four-year varsity member. Shreya's plans to double major in mathematics and economics and will attend Columbia University in the fall. Shreya, thank you for joining us.
For the activity list by school, so at school number one, students participated in the DEI Showcase on May 14. The spring concert was held on May 16. There was a first-grade reading celebration on June 7. Field Day was held on June 5. Kindergarten promotion took place on June 10. The grade five promotion was held earlier today. Students participated in a Bubbles for Autism event, and therapy dogs made a visit to the school. Next up, at school number 18, students participated in a Bubbles for Autism in April. A therapy dog visited the school in April and May. Third-grade students participated in the DEI Showcase on May 14. The track team placed first for the second consecutive year at the elementary track meet. The spring concert/band performance was held on May 29. There was a first-grade reading celebration on May 30. Field Day was held on June 10. Kindergarten promotion took place earlier today, and the fifth-grade promotion and awards will be held on June 14. Now for school number 19, a grow and glow party was held to recognize and praise students for their growth in academics. PBSIS honored the fourth and fifth grade honor roll inductees with breakfast. The DEI committee presented their project at the district showcase and offers a special thanks to the community stakeholders who helped make this project possible: Home Depot, Woodbridge Township Parks Department, and the Menlo Park Terrace Fire Department. Woodbridge police officers read to the students during Police Week, and Student Council presented the officers with thank-you cards. The fifth-grade boys won the relay race at the elementary track meet, and Title I students in grades one through three participated in a book club, which allowed them to showcase their project to their parents during lunchtime. At school number 24, students participated in the DEI Showcase. Bubble Day was celebrated. A Mother's Day plant sale was held from May 6 to May 10. Police Week was celebrated with students doing a craft with the Sheriff's Department, reading books, and coloring with the Woodbridge Police. And stepping-up ceremonies began May 30 for the preschool and kindergarten students. And for school number 29, Autism Acceptance and Spirit Week was held April 15 through 19. Bubbles for Autism Day was held on April 17. A school-wide fundraiser raised $485 for Autism Speaks. The Student Council raised $320 for the Woodbridge Animal Group, and students used their spare change to vote for a school spirit day theme. Next up, at Ford's Middle School, the girls' cross-country team placed second, and the boys' cross-country teams placed third for the season. Students participated in the district science, engineering, and technology symposium, with the eighth-grade science honor students placing second and third in the behavior science and psychology category, third in the environmental science category, and two groups ranked in the top 10% of projects, enabling them to enter their projects into the Thermo Fisher Junior Innovators Challenge. And lastly, for John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, the All-Star Track Festival was hosted at JFK for students across the district on April 25. Forty-two new members were inducted into the National English Honor Society. The annual AAPI Cultural Showcase, highlighting foods, dance, and other Asian Pacific Islander cultures, was held on May 2. At the district DEI Showcase on May 14, the dance students performed, and students also presented on the importance of access to clean air and water. The choir performed its spring concert on May 16. The first International Thesbian Society Gala was held on May 21. The annual melanoma walk to raise money for the American Cancer Society was held on May 29. And finally, the annual fashion show, displaying designs created by the talented fashion students, was held on June 6. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shreya, for your detailed report, and congratulations on your academic success. Good luck at Columbia. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. However, if you are unable to stay, we will not be attended.
I'm gonna stay, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, welcome forward. Dr. Massimino, you know what? Before I move on, I want to recognize Dr. Perry, a principal at JFK Memorial High School, for joining us. Thank you, Dr. Perry. Enjoy your summer, all right? Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of May 2024.
Mr. President, I submit the student registers and fire drill report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect to the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none? Dr. Massimino, we'll jump into the superintendent's agenda. Do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 39 items to present to the Board this evening.
Thank you, Doc. Do I have a motion for superintendent's agenda?
So motion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. John, I didn't hear you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, I have to abstain from items 36, 38, and 39 in the name of Rutgers University. Yes on all the other items.
Ms. Perez.
Mr. President, I will also have to abstain on the same items, items number 36, number 38, number 39, in the name of Rutgers University. Yes to all other items.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes on all items.
Mr. Valles.
Yes on all items.
Mr. Harris.
Yes on all items.
Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda. Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Agenda. I'll be asking, Mr. Mohammed, would you be able to move that agenda for us?
Oh, sure.
The right next one. Sorry if you had Mr. Sedana depart.
Mr. President, the Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 61 items.
Excellent.
I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Things happen. Live TV here, folks.
All right. We're moving on to Finance and Insurance Agenda. That's Mr. Treeblosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following 18 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treeblosser. I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Buildings and Grounds Agenda. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, I have to abstain from items 36, 38, and 39 in the name of Rutgers University. Yes on all the other items.
Ms. Perez.
Mr. President, I will also have to abstain on the same items, items number 36, number 38, number 39, in the name of Rutgers University. Yes to all other items.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes on all items.
Mr. Valles.
Yes on all items.
Mr. Harris.
Yes on all items.
Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda. Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 61 items. Excellent.
I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr.树
Thanks, Adam. Live TV here, folks. All right. We're moving on to Finance and Insurance Agenda. That's Mr. Treeblosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following 18 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treeblosser. I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr.树
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Personnel Agenda. Mr. De La Pietro.
Is there any negotiation?
Negotiation.
On my script, do you want to do negotiations first, or do negotiations?
Well, no, it's in order.
It's in the order?
Personnel.
I don't know. We'll have to talk to Ms. Line again about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, presents the following 54 items. I will be abstaining on items 44 through 48. Yes on all other items.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing, you know, I will opine here before us this evening on the personnel, no, excuse me, it's on the next agenda. Even I'm all twisted up here. Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro, I just want to clarify, since now we have it, 44 through 48, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Yes on all others?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr.树
I will be abstaining on item 51 in the name Michael Henderson.
Yes on all other items, and I will be abstaining on 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
And Mr. Harris?
I'll be abstaining on items number 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49. Thank you.
Yes on all others?
Yes, yes, on the remaining agenda. Thank you. Negotiations Agenda. Mr. Perez.
The Board of Education Nominations Committee presents the following two items, and I move for the adoption of foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez, and seconded by Mr. De La, Mr. Treeblosser, I apologize. Are there any comments or questions from the board? This was where I wanted to just make a quick comment. Each, President of each, each board gets an opportunity to appoint a negotiations committee. I selected Mr. Velez, along with Mr. Sedana and Ms. Bourdain, our Vice President, to serve on that committee. They began in earnest negotiating item number one. That was the Woodbridge Township Education Association Contract. When I think of the school board, there are the three most important things that any school board will vote on. First being the Chief Academic Officer, or Chief Executive Officer, or Superintendent, generally because the contracts are three to five years. After that, an annual budget, which usually is in the, for us, or it's over $300 million. And then the third most important thing we vote on in any given three to five-year cycle is also the Educator's Contract, which is a huge undertaking, takes a lot of time, energy, effort. And fortunately, we have a long history of a very solid, strong working relationship between management and labor. And I want to thank our committee for the work you did. I know for Dr. Massimino, it's important, we got contracts done on time, and we did it on time, and, you know, according to Mr. Wolferman, on budget, which we're very pleased about. I want to thank our partners on the labor side, the WTA. President Joffrey, thank you very much. We're happy to approve this contract as well. So with that, anyone else wish to make any comments?
Mr. President, I'd just like to also applaud the work of the team and everyone that's involved. Great job on the contract.
I agree. All right, seeing no others?
Mr. President, I'd like to thank Mr. Wolferman on the administrative side for his, his guidance in explaining the mundane to us, and his math, mad math skills. So, thank you, Mr. Wolferman.
Seeing no others, roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, sorry, I was checking in what legal there. Yeah, so, thank you. Is there any old business that should be brought up for the attention of the board? Ms. Bourdain.
Mr., yes, you got me. I move to amend the board's previous finding regarding HIB investigation 264113-WMS-04162024 to a finding of founded. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Wolferman, I think we have to do a vote on that, correct? Is that, yeah. Do I have a second on Ms. Bourdain's motion? Thank you. Motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Ms. Perez. Roll call.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
It's up to me already?
Yes.
All right, any other old business that should be brought up for the attention of the board? Seeing none, any new business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to announce that Woodbridge Township Juneteenth Celebration, which is sponsored by Wonak, will be on Saturday, June 15th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. They're going to have music by DJ Ran, and there's also going to have the Epic Soul Band. It will be at Woodbridge High School, and all are welcome, so hopefully everybody will come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So Frank Sam, Frank?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to recognize one of our, our power professionals. Last month, a student suffered a serious medical emergency at JFK High School. Power professional Sue Bergando witnessed the event and provided immediate medical care by using her CPR training to care for the student until more help arrived. I'd like to recognize Sue Bergando for her quick actions that day, providing medical care for the downed student, which resulted in her speedy recovery. Well, you know, we give our, our employees all this, this training, and it's good to see that our employees, something like this. You know, not a lot of people jump in and want to help, you know? But she did an excellent job. I got a lot of people, you know, with feedback that wanted her to be recognized, so. Sue, you did a good job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for recognizing her. Anybody else?
Mr. President, I'd also like to make a quick announcement.
Sure.
I wanted to announce that the Acacia Youth Center will be open this summer for Woodbridge Township students entering the sixth to eighth grade. They're open Monday, June 24th, through Friday, August 16th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and you can find more information on their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Bourdain, I see your phone's open there.
My phone is open, and unfortunately, my page went away. But I do know that it, there are two things that I wanted to mention was, Middlesex County is offering free swimming lessons to all second graders throughout the Middlesex County area. And I was going to do Jenny's as well, but Jenny did that one. And I do, I, the information is out there pretty much on all social media channels, so you can find information on the swim lessons, and obviously, it's a very important, swim lessons save lives, right?
Right.
I appreciate Middlesex County for doing that. The other thing I wanted to say was congratulations to the class of 2024. You guys have been through a lot in your years of school. You've been resilient, and I do want to wish you a lot of luck in whatever your future holds. So, congratulations, can't wait to celebrate with you on Tuesday. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain, yes, I echo that. Congratulations to the class of 2024. I did have just one recognition. Each summer, the Township Recreation Department and the Woodbridge Township School District partner up and provide summer enrichment classes to our students, to students who sign up. It's subscription-based, ranges between $75 and $100, $150 per class. There's 45 classes that the Recreation Department offers through their website. You can sign up there, call or email the Recreation Department. These are taught, these classes are taught by Township School District teachers, and the courses range from STEM to the arts to the humanities. Really great way for children to, to stay sharp during the summer months, as well as visiting our, our Woodbridge library system and, and picking up a book and making sure they, they stay, they stay sharp for the next school year, starting next year. With that, that concludes my remarks. Anybody else? Seeing no others? It's a portion of the meeting where we kick it over back to the public. We will now open up the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name, the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Mr. Joffrey?
Thank you, President Harris. Brian Joffrey, President WTA. And I want to echo your remarks about congratulating the, the board on their hard work, the board's negotiations team. I want to thank you on behalf of the association. In my 25 years of being involved with WTA negotiations, this is only the second time that we've settled a contract prior to the expiration. It is not the norm. It is only due to the hard work and dedication of both teams working together. Over the years, negotiations, many times, it can be adversarial. That was not the case. Both teams were willing to work together, define common ground, work through our differences, and I'm pleased that, of the result that was put forward. So I cannot thank you enough for the, for the board team, along with Mr. Wolferman, the time, the commitment, the dedication, and we are very happy with the result. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
How you doing? My name is... How you doing? My name is William Bakula. My son goes to Island Middle Schools. We live in Island. I hope that you can give me a little more than five minutes. I've got some issues that kind of surprised me curriculum-wise and academically, and I just wanted to voice the things that I've learned. I've already spoken with Mr. Postorino. He's given me an hour and a half of his time, which I'm very thankful for, but I still walk away with a confusion about where things are and where the township stands. I kind of feel that there is a lack of exposure and opportunity curriculum-wise in the township. I'll give you a few examples. My son is graduating eighth grade, going into ninth grade from IMS to JFK. And history, which to me is one of the pillar subjects, he has yet to be taught anything that transpired pretty much in the 20th century. There are different ways to teach history. You can take a spiral approach where, remember the old days where you just got dates when you were a little kid, and then you moved up to more details? He hasn't even gotten dates. I have to tell him about World War II, Vietnam, Depression, all of that. Now, he has had civics, which is taking care of some of the government issues, but he hasn't gone into no details in that. That's history. In math and in science, I'm going to talk about the NJSLA. He is in honors math, so he got, he was in algebra, he took the Algebra I NJSLA test this spring. We went through the practice tests, and he did not, he had never been exposed